Okay, we're back. Mic is on. We are back. We'll move on to 7B, motion-
Oh, we need a motion to- Nope, sorry.
A motion to reconvene into open session?
I'll make a motion to reconvene into open session.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Henry?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Wilkin?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then C, I believe I heard Tom say discussion of possible action requiring items discussed in closed session was not necessary?
Correct.
So move on to A, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the resolution establishing the City of Delafield library levy per the information in the packet.
I'll second. Now, we need to have a-
Okay.
We need to-
So now, is there any discussion?
I have a discussion. I have a discussion on that. In the resolution, in the now therefore be it resolved section, I believe the number is incorrect and it should be .215554, taking out those leading zeros.
Yeah, it's right, it's a typo. It should either be the .00, well, actually, that's not even correct. The first part is either the .2156 per 1,000 or the .000-
Stephanie, can you come on up and help us with this? Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, the first and third paragraphs.
Yeah, I think the numbers are not consistent.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie Ramirez, Library Director. Yes, I apologize, that is a typo. Elder person Wilkin is correct. It is the .21554. The one just got rounded up and the other one did not.
Okay, so we go to-
But the second, the resolved one, that should be a tax rate, not a dollar amount. In the now therefore be it result, is that what you're- it shouldn't be a dollar sign on that.
If we do a dollar sign, it should be .2156, right?
Right, you just need to get rid of the two zeros.
Right. Three zeros?
Three zeros.
It should be three zeros, you're correct.
They should match, right?
The first entry is correct.
Stephanie, do you have the resolution in front of you?
I do. But I do have the corrected one, because I knew there was going to be one that was corrected. But no, it should be the .21554. That is the number that was given from the Waukesha County one.
Okay, right now, what the older people are looking at in the third paragraph, it says dollar sign 0.000215554?
Yes, the, yes, the .000 as, as the older person Valdi was mentioning, should be removed.
Okay. So that should be changed to dollar sign 0.2156, like in the first paragraph?
Either that or the 2.1554, which is, again, the one just got rounded up to the .2156.
I think if we put the .2156 in there, that's technically a little bit better, since .215554 is less than .2156. If we make them both match, it's simple. We've got four significant digits and away we go.
We don't need six-digit precision?
Right.
So-
But the, just to be clear, though, the resolution is to expand no less than a rate of, so having a lower rate would- Sorry, I'm thinking backwards. Is that right? But- So the point, I know it's like a-
If it matches, you're okay.
It's a couple dollars. You're right.
But if we keep it, if we keep it lower, it's a couple dollars versus if we do it higher. Yeah. Rounding down versus rounding up, it's gonna-
So if the council was interested, they could pass this resolution based on staff revising it to match the minimum levy required?
Let's, let's do that. Thank you, Tom.
We're confused by decimals.
I will amend my motion to establish the library levy for 2020, I'm sorry, 2024 to be at the minimum levy required from the county.
Second.
Okay, is there any, is there any other discussion?
Wilkin had the second, correct?
Yep. Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Thank you very much, and I apologize about the typo there.
Well done.
Thank you.
We had some diligent older people that caught it. Okay, we will go on to number nine, A, licenses. A, discussion of possible action regarding issuing the 2023-2024 Class B liquor and Class B beer alcohol beverage retail license, conditionally surrendered by Wisconsin Apple, DBA Applebee's, to SBG Apple North 7LLC, DBA 863-Applebee's. Sounds like ownership change.
Yeah, so this is a somewhat standard request for these franchise-type locations. It's essentially ownership-changing, but licenses may not be transferred to owners, so the current owner needs to surrender their license and council would have to make the determination as to whether or not they would want to issue that. This owner is surrendering the license conditionally, so he would only surrender it if it were to be issued to the other person, and this is a pretty standard practice. My understanding is that the closing should have happened, but my guess is that it's contingent upon this license being reissued. You could put a timeline on the closing just to make sure that it's not hanging out there kind of indefinitely. That would be, you know, up to the council if they chose to, if you chose to approve the issuing of the license to the SBG Apple North, the surrendered license. Any other questions about that?
If you were to put a timeline on it, what, what would you recommend, like through the end of the year or something, just so that it's not like indefinite?
I mean, that would be fair. I would 60, 90 days, something like that. Kind of up to you. I don't think they need much time at all, given the fact that they were planning on closing last week, so.
I don't know, I guess my inclination would be just to approve the action, since it's a pretty standard procedure. I'm just not sure how to word this.
So to issue the license, the 2023-
Yeah, move to approve the issuing of the license. Basically, it looks like it's a transferred license or surrendered from one Applebee's organization to another, is how I'm looking at it.
Would you consider amending your motion to put a time limit on it?
Give me a time limit, sure. 60 days.
I'll second.
All right, Matt seconds.
All right.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to 9AB, discussion of possible action to consider approval of the request to pursue the purchase of a reserved Class B liquor license from the town of Delafield on behalf of Brunch Delafield LLC. Molly?
All right, so this business is set to have an outlet in the grain. They have requested that we pursue the license purchase from the town of Delafield. We have been through this before, about a year ago. Delafield, the town of Delafield does have one license left that they are willing to part with. They have given us a tentative price. Obviously, that's kind of contingent upon their board approving the price, but it would be the $30,000. The, I would, my assumption here is pretty much everything's going to be the same. The contract will look basically identical with a different business in it. So the process to move forward is, is really, you know, pretty, pretty simple. We just need your okay to move forward with that request. We do have the applicants here in the audience today. If you, you know, had any questions for them at all, you guys can come up and-
If nothing else, tell us about your business that's coming.
I was gonna say, when do you open?
If you could just name and address for the record, please?
I'm Stephanie Fremah.
If you could hit the button so the red lights come on, perfect, thank you.
I'm Stephanie Fremah. This is my husband, Bill. We lived in Delafield for about 12 years, and we're looking to open up Brunch. The name of the restaurant is Brunch, and so it'd be in the grain building that's being put up right now and looking for delivery of the building to us towards the end of the year. And then the soft and grand opening would be May of 2023, 2024. So that's what we're looking for the liquor license for. Sum up the restaurant, brunch-style restaurant, so it would be open seven days a week from 7:00 to 3:00. Very family-friendly, upscale breakfast brunch foods, so that's what we're, what we're looking to do.
Is this your first endeavor? Have you done one before, or did you work for somebody else, or?
So this is our, this is our first, our first restaurant. I have 15 years' experience previously to my current career. My husband's a carpenter by trade, general contractor. Our good friend and also his business partner is actually the franchise owner of Brunch. There's currently three locations, one in Milwaukee, one in Brookfield, and they just opened one in Cedarburg. And it's, it's just a really neat brand and it's done really well. It's been opened, the franchise has been opened, obviously, local, since 2016. So this would be the second franchise location of Brunch.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So yeah.
Is this the, just a question, is this the town's last liquor license?
It is the last liquor license that they're allowed statutorily to sell.
And given our census, we didn't gain another liquor license, did we?
Population went down to 44 people.
So no. So this would be the last business that would get a liquor license?
I have, I have-
Go ahead, Molly.
I have some asks out. I still have some pending answers. Potential for the City of Oconomowoc would perhaps consider, but this is the last that we have a guaranteed yes, we're absolutely looking to sell, so.
No pressure.
And I see there's a signed agreement that if we agree to this, we buy this, we're not on the hook, that, that Brunch It Up is obligated to pay the $30,000.
So we can't pay. We're basically the middleman.
Okay.
So when we receive payment from Brunch Delafield, we then pass that through to the town of Delafield.
So it's contingent upon that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to pursue the purchase of a Class B liquor license from the town of Delafield on behalf of Brunch Delafield LLC.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Yes, we're looking forward to brunch!
Absolutely.
Help them build the building.
Stay on them.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we will be moving to 9AC, discussion of possible action regarding increasing the reserve license fee as requested by the Mayor Atwell. So to what we just spoke here, we've done this now twice, where we've gone to the town of Delafield and they're charging us $30,000 for a liquor license, and as was explained, that's just a pass-through for us. So, you know, I thought it was worth the discussion that we look at what we charge for our own liquor licenses, where if one became available to us, what would we charge an applicant for that? And I would suggest that we should increase, consider increasing our fee to be a market price. What is our current fee now?
$10,000.
$10,000, and the last two applicants have been willing to pay $30,000. So I bring it to you for discussion as to what you think, if you think a market price is appropriate, and if so, we could go through the process of raising our fee. We're looking for your feedback and thoughts on that.
So, yeah, quick question. Once they're sold, if a, if a business relinquishes it, does that come back to us at zero cost for us to sell again?
Yes.
Okay.
It's our license, it's a reserve purchase license, it's a reserve license, we then would get that reserve fee when we sell it.
And so, and once you, once you acquire it, you have it, you don't pay that every year, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
You pay it if you move locations.
It's like a franchise fee, right?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay.
Like a one-time buy-in.
How many have we sold at that, how many have we sold? How many have we sold, been the pass-through for the town? I'm just trying to gauge, I, I agree with the, with the market value argument. I'm just wondering, is it a detriment? Is it a deterrent to locate in the city of Delafield? I mean, from our, our cost of community services study and what people want in the city of Delafield, they kind of overwhelmingly wanted those restaurants and bars and floating it out there.
And the applicants seem more than willing to pay it.
Yeah, right. And we sold two so far at $30,000?
Yeah.
So, Molly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first one from the town of Delafield was $25,000, and this time they're asking $30,000? This would be the second one.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Molly, I don't want to misspeak, but did somebody give us a higher number as a possibility if they were gonna sell us or let us sell their license? Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, they showed a, throughout the $50,000 number, if they were willing to sell. They had been initially considering it and then came back with a no, but if they did change their mind, they were expecting the price tag to be at that $50,000. I said, would you maybe consider discussing the $30,000 and discussing whether or not you were wanting to sell? So. I mean, and I've heard more.
You mentioned the City of Oconomowoc-
Yeah.
-as well. Are we limited by geography? Can we only appeal to communities that touch our borders in some way or within a-
Yes, contiguous or within two miles. So I had a CH pull me a accurate location of two miles from our borders and contacted all of the municipalities.
Recently.
Great, thank you.
Still working on the follow-up.
At first, our first group was just ones that we were touching, but we recently expanded it to the two miles.
Well, and with the build-out of the grain, Ham It Up or Brunch, Brunch is one of, I mean, how many-
We could need more.
Yeah, we could need like three more.
Yeah.
Could be four more.
We don't know.
We're not setting those rates, though.
So there-
No, no, I'm just, I mean, $50,000 is a, a big deterrent to come and locate.
We have, you know, Class B beer, and there's an unlimited amount of that, and the fee for that license is $100. There's a Class C wine, which is also $100. So we do have options for certain types of businesses to still, you know, without purchasing another liquor license, but, you know, we, it would be, you know, nice to, to have more.
But there couldn't be any trading within restaurants, bars, within the city of Delafield? If, if someone gives up their license-
It comes back to the city.
It comes back to the city. They can't say, I'll take a beer license in exchange for my liquor license and I'll take $30,000. Like, the brunch people sell a lot of Bloody Marys, but maybe they're not selling enough and they want to sell, they want to get that $30,000 to add something else. They couldn't trade it within.
I, I'm not sure that they couldn't make that arrangement externally, but that would be, you know-
But there was no, there would be no guarantee-
Right.
That, once they give it back to the city, that it would go to the organization that they intend for it to go to? Because it's fully at the council's discretion on what's in the best interest of the city. It's not first come, first served or anything like that.
I don't object to, to raising the price.
Do you know what the common practice, do you, like, so for them selling us the liquor license at $30,000, do you know what they're charging their own? Does that make sense?
I don't quite understand the question.
Like, we're talking about what are we gonna charge our own, for our own-
Reserves?
Yeah, what are they charging for their own?
What would the town of Delafield be?
Yeah.
I, I don't know off the top of my head. There is a range. I think for a while, standard was just the $10,000 minimum. That reserve fee is the minimum fee that you can charge. But I don't have like a solid comparison, so I wouldn't want to put a average price.
10 sounds too cheap, 50 sounds a little silly. Somewhere between there. 20?
Well, you've got the market price of 30-
Yeah, I mean, they're-
25 and 30.
Oh, so. Again, we're talking not what we're gonna sell to a different city, we're talking about what we're gonna sell to our current people, right?
Right.
Yeah.
A new applicant. Should somebody relinquish one? What a new applicant would have to pay, which is kind of what's going on with what they're willing to pay for other-
Or if we get another reserve license in the future, based on population growth, hopefully in 2024.
I mean, there's, it's, it's like impact fees, too. I mean, we've got, it's, those aren't huge, but we have those for like new developments, right?
We do, and they're fairly significant.
Okay, so-
Some developers would call them huge.
Okay, well, so they're huge. But there's, I mean, there's good, good and bad that come with a new establishment selling alcohol, so I mean, we just, we're talking about our, our police support system and what they cost. So I'll, I think it's reasonable, I'll make a motion to increase the reserve license fee for the city of Delafield moving forward at $30,000.
I think it's an ordinance change.
I'll make a motion to request that we present a resolution to do that.
I'll second that.
So how much was it?
30. Is there any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, objections, passes. Okay, we'll move on to 9B, Planning Commission. Mr. Iker?
Okay, Planning Commission. I had mentioned earlier that it seems like a year ago, we've had a nice fun summer, that we had a Plan Commission meeting, but it's not that, that nothing happened, we just did not have lots of fireworks and new developments going on. But not to diminish the fact that we did have, you know, some new, new businesses come into town. You can look at the minutes for those. And we've had an ongoing wrestling with our, our dentist on the southeast corner of 94 and C just to shore up some landscaping plans and some challenges he had with a septic tank and other things. It's been, been kind of languishing and we've got dates for that to be cleared up. And also, we're going through different ordinances in the city that present some ambiguity to our building inspector, which isn't fair on him, it's not fair on applicants, so look for some, in the future packets, some ordinance changes that just make things more cut and dry so that he's not on the hook for making a judgment call when he would rather defer it, and he's not being asked to defer something or he can make an easy judgment call. So those are, those are some things that are coming down the pike. Aside from that, just, you know, sign up for the notify me online if you're interested in following what's going on with the Plan Commission for new developments, and our next meeting is a week from Wednesday. That's all I have for Plan Commission.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to C, Lake Welfare Committee. Mr. Price?
Yes, we had a meeting last week, and most all of our remaining time was spent in discussing boathouses. We've had two inch, two very interesting situations of two boathouses with some very, very extensive, expensive changes to their boathouse when the discussion with the Lake Welfare Committee Chairman and the building inspector was to do very, very minimal changes. They both turned both boathouses into basically lake houses. So we have rejected, one of the biggest issues they put up was very expensive sliding glass doors in the front. So they're trying to look out instead of cover up looking in of all the crap that they stored. So we voted to go back to them and have them remove the glass doors. So that it was sent to the Plan Commission, and we'll see if the Plan Commission does what that-
Look for that Wednesday, then, right?
Yeah, so then we're in the process of redoing our checklist on boathouses to make it clearer so that does not happen again.
In addition to the doors, was the plumbing and the HVAC an issue?
Right, those were issues as well, because that was not, not in our code, and one of them had extensive HVAC and plumbing, which was not given permission whatsoever, but they did it anyways. So it's gonna be kind of a fight to get that fixed.
When's your next meeting?
Ours is in three weeks.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to D, Park and Rec. Mr. Schaefer?
Budget's been the hot topic, and we meet a week from today, hopefully for final approval of that. That's it.
That's it, okay. Move on to E, Public Works. Mr. Grimmer?
We had a meeting August 2nd. I was unable to attend, I was out of town.
Tom, anything to add there?
Or was it canceled?
Were canceled?
Yeah, it was canceled due to lack of quorum at the last minute.
There you go. No meeting, no report.
You got there. All right. Delahart, back to Mr. Iker.
I, I don't think I reported at our last meeting, but I did mention that we were looking for a new general manager, because Scott Luzak, who's been there since he was a toddler, maybe, he's been there for a long time. He's retiring sometime early next year, and we're setting those dates. We did find an extremely qualified person to take his place, and he's starting sometime in early September, so there'll be overlap and some exchange of tribal knowledge along with just the, the ins and outs of the employees and that. So in the past 18 months, we've had a new finance director and now a treasurer and now a new general manager coming on board, and we're, the board is extremely excited and content and satisfied with some quality hires that we have. So a little changing of the guard, but all, all is well at Delhart.
Great, thank you very much. Move on to G, Police Commission. Ms. Valdi?
No meeting, no report.
All righty, we'll move on to Library Board. Ms. Henry?
We have not had a meeting since our last meeting. We are meeting tomorrow, actually.
Okay. And then I have B, Library Director, Monthly Update?
It's just the packet, the, I know it's in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so refer to the packet.
Sounds good, got it. Okay, we'll move on to I, Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Valdi, soon, no meeting? That might be changing down the road. Okay, J, Promotion and Tourism Commission. Mr. Schaefer?
Regular meeting, there was no quorum, but we call a special meeting for tomorrow to review and approve the budget. And subject to a vote later tonight, we hope to welcome a new member to the commission.
Sounds good. Okay, K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, I'll refer you to the Lake Country Fire and Rescue website, where there is a list of meetings scheduled there currently. L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board. Mr. Grimmer?
We do have a meeting on Wednesday at 5:00 PM at Station 242, which is our city station. And I know all of you were informed of a letter of compromise that was sent out to- to resolve some of the ongoing issues with, um, our partner municipalities in regards to the twenty twenty-four budget. The funding and, um, the I M A.
All righty, we will move on. M, dear management committee. Mr. Wilkin?
The dear management committee met last week and, uh, we are ready to start the, the hunting season on September sixteenth, I believe it is. And we'll go through January. Uh, we have completed the deer stand move that we wanted to do and we've, we've cleared out some, some shooting lanes and we should be in good shape. We expect that the, uh, scheduling calendar will go up first of September, so we'll have a couple of weeks for hunters to, to sign up for scheduled appointments.
Good. Looking forward to a good productive season. I think you're in better shape to start the season this year with all the stands and stuff than we have been in the past, so. Good work.
Thank you.
Start my yard.
Okay, N, other committees and commissions. I see none. Ten, unfinished business. I see none. Eleven, mayor's report. Uh, eleven A, discussion pass possible action on the following items. Uh, A, accept resignation of Robert Wyler, uh, from citizen member position on the planning commission.
I'll move to accept, uh, Rob Wyler's resignation.
Second.
He will be missed.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Move on to eleven A B. Confirm appointment of Scott Crinkie to citizen member position on the planning commission vacated by Robert Wyler, term to expire April twenty twenty-six.
I'll move to improve, uh, approve, um, the appointment of Scott to the planning commission. Second.
I think Mark got it.
Aye, Wilkin.
Oh, you, oh, okay. Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Eleven A C. Confirm appointment of Aaron McDonald to, to the hotel representative position on the promotion and tourism commission vacated by Stephen McCarthy, term to expire April twenty twenty-four.
I'll move to approve the appointment of Aaron McDonald to promotion and tourism.
Second.
All righty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right, we'll move on to twelve, new business. A, discussion of possible action regarding alternatives for the video replay of the common council and planning commission meetings at scheduled times throughout the week due to limitations with proposed playback option for the A V upgrade project. Molly?
The, um, A V upgrade project included a twenty-five hundred dollar solution for scheduling regular playback on, for the common council and planning commission meetings on channel twenty-five. For the record, we have not had any scheduled playback, um, for quite some time now because the solution that we have now is, for lack of a better term, broken. The solution that we had planned needs some additional, um, product to, uh, work, um, that was unexpected in the amount of, I think, uh, five thousand dollars or so. There's a note from, um, Mike Miles in the, the packet. So the discussion here is whether or not the council wants to approve that increase in the budget for that scheduled playback or, um, the other option that, uh, Mike offered was to remove that option. We are still doing the live playback on channel twenty-five and we're still doing the live streaming on YouTube. It would be that, um, programmed playback that happens throughout the week um, that you watch at seven o'clock to help yourself, uh, go to sleep, you know? To learn all about the city throughout the week. But, um, yeah, so that's, that's what we would be not doing anymore, but the live playback, um, on YouTube and, um, channel twenty-five would still be occurring.
So we can spend five thousand to get it played on channel twenty-five at scheduled times or we can not? And then, um, did you say we would get?
Twenty-five hundred credit.
Credit. I would be in favor of the latter. Getting twenty-five hundred dollars back. I think YouTube does a great job. I agree totally.
It's easier to watch it on YouTube.
I, I think, yeah.
You can ask for it too, yeah.
You can't go to Chicago and watch channel twenty-five.
Right, I can mute.
I think, yeah, as a fan of democracy, I think, you know, the YouTube is more accessible and accessible for more places. And I think that's the wave of the future. So I think we would be wise to just save some money.
If, if you could, I think there's good content for communicator for January as to highlight the fact that this is what's going on in the future and let people know that, how to access it on YouTube, you know, because some people, not a lot, but some people are going to look for it. It's not going to be there. And, uh, if they need to come in and be directed to the library with a little slip saying, help this person learn how to use a different resource that's here, um, at their own leisure instead of getting some popcorn and sitting down at a set time, right? So I think that'd be, I think it'd be good content for the communicator to offset the, you know, the handful of people that are relying on it, so.
Heard.
Yeah, point well taken. There are some older people, particularly in my experience, that tend to watch that. But in all reality, I mean, it's been six months since we've had the scheduled playback working. Is that fair?
I think that's more than fair. It's more like nine.
And, uh, we have, I don't know, I haven't heard a complaint. Has anybody here heard a complaint?
Do you need a motion or you just want to do it? We're pretty clear. I'll move to, um, for, let's see, what do we got here? I move for option one of, uh, choosing not to continue replaying the meeting on channel twenty-five and accepting a credit of twenty-five hundred dollars from, uh, Miles Pro A V and an article to go into the communicator to advise people of where to find our meetings on YouTube.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Is there anything that we can put, um, not just the communicator, but on the website of like links to, or just a link to the, the channel that they can get there from the website?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
We have one, but I can make it more prominent.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Just to clarify, Price had the second on that?
Yes.
Okay, twelve B, review of twenty twenty-two city of Delafield audit including the twenty twenty-two financial statement overview and the twenty twenty-two financial statement with independent auditors report provided by Johnson Block CPAs. Tom?
Yeah, so our finance officer, Amy Bookman, is on vacation, uh, this week and, and put together a summary of the audit for me to go over with you. Basically, the twenty twenty-two audit went very well. Uh, Johnson Block issued us an unmodified audit agreeing that everything was fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Some of the key financial results were, in total, the general fund balance increased by about a hundred and nine thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. Intergovernmental revenues came in at two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars higher than what was budgeted, which included recognizing and spending, uh, a quarter of our ARPA, uh, grant, which was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Other taxes came in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars higher than budget mainly due to receiving more hotel taxes than budget. Uh, this in turn results in a higher contribution to tourism, uh, which shows up as an expense in our budget. General government expenditures were fifty-eight thousand dollars less than budgeted mainly due to the general administration salaries and election salaries coming in sixteen thousand and twelve thousand dollars under budget respectively. Public safety expenses, uh, came in slightly over budget. Building inspection is included in, um, public safety. Um, and so the main reason public safety expenditures came in high is primarily due to, uh, increased, uh, building inspections, uh, which is then offset by an associated revenue for those inspections. Uh, public works expenditures were forty-four thousand dollars under budget, uh, largely due to, um, uh, a mild winter with lower snow and ice, uh, expenses. Uh, also refuse and garbage collection and street ceiling expenses were under budget. Conservation and development expenditures came in at a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars higher than the budget due to more contributions made to the tourism commission. And as mentioned before, that's offset by, um, the higher revenues that were brought in from, from the hotel taxes. Overall, our general fund, unassigned fund balance is now up to twenty-two point seven five percent of annual expenditures. Um, so we're doing better than our twenty percent goal that we have for that. With the, um, utilities, uh, both of our, both our water utility and our stormwater utility uh, had significant operating income and increased cash flow uh, and has been the case for several years now. Uh, our sewer utility had, um, an operating loss of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, which is typical for this utility with high depreciation. The, despite the operating loss, um, there was still an increase in cash flow and the sewer utility has significant cash reserves, uh, to accommodate, um, a, a bit of an operating loss each year. Uh, lastly, uh, the city's, uh, general obligation, um, debt amount is about fourteen million dollars, uh, currently. And our, uh, debt limit is ninety-seven million dollars. Uh, so we're utilizing less than fifteen percent of our, uh, debt capacity. And that's, uh, the extent of the summary that Amy provided. Are there any questions about the audit or the results?
I've, I've got a couple that are just dealing with a particular table. I don't know if I should just email them to Amy and you.
Yeah.
It's kind of wonky. I don't know what's.
Yeah, if they're just more technical, detailed oriented, we could handle those offline.
Okay.
No other questions?
Sounds pretty good.
All righty, we will, uh, move on then. Uh, twelve C, discussion of possible action regarding the request by Cal Magnum of Magnum assessments to approve amending the refund to D E L C eight zero two dash zero zero six dash zero zero one from one million seven hundred and seventy-nine, oh, no, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-one cents to one thousand six hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents due to a calculation error. Cal?
Yeah, I came in front of the board on February sixth and asked for, uh, three properties to have, uh, rescinded taxes. In doing the calculation for the rescinded tax for this eight oh two zero zero six one, I basically corrected, uh, the amount for the adjustment based on an appraisal he had sent me, not the actual assessment value that I changed it to. So when Amy was filing paper with the state, it became an issue that the rescinded amount was incorrect. It should be the sixteen hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents, so.
Well, let's get them approved quick. He had to come here for two hours.
I made a mistake. I'm house of steak.
I'll make a motion to amend the refund to D E L C eight zero two zero zero six zero zero one from one seven seven nine point four one to one six zero one point two one.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
You're still presumed to be correct.
Thanks, Cal.
Thanks, Cal.
All right, move on to D, discussion of possible action, action regarding the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources surface water grant application and authorizing resolution number two zero two three dash one two for the purpose of updating the city of Delafield's aquatic plant management plan for Negwick Lake as required to apply for a new mechanical harvesting permit needed for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, if you recall, at the July council meeting, the council approved moving forward with an aquatic plant management plan update. And, um, as promised, uh, this is the, uh, preliminary, uh, application for the, uh, the grant application submittal and then also the authorizing resolution that's required as part of that, uh, submittal. And so with that, I'm looking for a motion approving both the, uh, grant submittal and the authorizing, uh, resolution.
Also move. I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to E, discussion of possible action regarding a temporary limited construction and access easement agreement between the Blot Revocable Living Trust owner and the city of Delafield City to, to provide the property access necessary to perform the city's dredging project including payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from the city to the owner as compensation for the easement. Tom?
As you may also recall, back in July, we, uh, awarded a contract for the dredging project. Uh, that memo that was included in it, uh, laid out the, uh, budget for the project. And one component of that was a thirty thousand dollar payment to a private property owner, uh, to provide the access easement to get the, get to the water that'll allow the, um, dump trucks to, uh, get in, in and out to the, um, to the water to remove the sediment. And the proposed access, um, easement agreement is in your packet. And, um, it's pretty straightforward, uh, but the one significant thing is that it does include a thirty thousand dollar payment from the city uh, to the owner. And as I said, that's already been incorporated into the, uh, budget that the council based its, uh, contract approval upon.
Did we pay for similar services the last time we, um, dredged?
Well, the city's never dredged before, but, uh, when that area was accessed by a private group, um, it was a different owner and that owner allowed that access to be used for free.
I was part of a private dredging project and, uh, I think we used the property for several months for three thousand dollars.
Three?
Three. And that was, that was not only removal, but that was the geotextile drying area.
So you're saying the intensity of use was higher at that time?
Was a long-term use.
So you, you have, do you have an opinion on this dollar amount?
Couple acres for three thousand dollars. I can buy a liquor license for this, less than this. Sorry.
So all I'll say on that is, um.
No alternative?
All I'll say on that is we've gone through extensive, uh, negotiations. It's a bit of a monopoly. There's one property that exists that, um, provides the, uh, access, um, in that location. And, um, there's been many city officials that have been involved in talking to the property owner. The property owner did reluctantly reduce their, their proposed, uh, compensation from thirty-five thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars.
It's a lot of money, but I understand we don't have a reasonable alternative.
Does the property owner benefit from the, the dredging?
Yes.
Uh, not right on his frontage, but as far as access in and out of the lake, yes.
Yeah, he's right in front of the pile.
We're, we're capitalist society. Um, is there any way to, um, is there any way to apply this money and have, I, I don't know if, if this is maybe a little off. It's not off topic because this is the topic, but is there any way if people wanted to leverage, use their own private funds to increase the amount of, um, dredging that occurred and take care of this fee in a different way? That, well, I mean, I don't know if you know what I'm saying, um.
Are you saying, are you asking if the city would, would accept donations towards the project to increase the amount that we can dredge? I would assume that the common council would accept such donations.
So that.
I, I think it's a little late. We, we already have approved the dredging, so it's like a tiny bit of money compared to what it's costing to do the project. And that's the most important thing. And as you just said, Tim, we are a capitalist society and this person has the monopoly. It's got the point we need. Um, I'm not thrilled at spending thirty grand, but.
Well, this is just, this is less dredging is what I'm saying. There's a budget for dredging. This is less material being removed.
Right. Right.
Because of this cost, if somebody wanted to opt in for.
Let me also add that the, the city has a permit to remove 7,000 cubic yards and the DNR has indicated that there's a bit of a squish factor in that, that we could probably go up to 7,500 without needing a, a new amendment, a new permit or revised permit. And the city's only able to afford to remove about 6,000 yards and the private property owners are already discussing utilizing the balance of the city's permit and paying for that themselves.
That's kind of where I was going.
Yeah.
Okay, I, okay. Question answered.
I'm going to just, is, are we still on track to, to do this in the fall? Like, is this still scheduled to be done this fall?
There's two permits that we're still waiting for. Those were, we couldn't apply for them until we made a decision about mechanical versus hydraulic dredging, which, so we weren't able to submit for those permits until I think it was like mid-July. And technically, the DNR has 120 days to approve those permits, but they've indicated that they are going to be trying to work with us to get them done much sooner than 120 days. But my point is if they take the full 120 days, that's going to put us to, to the point where we would push the project to next year. But the DNR understands that we want to get the project done this year and is working with us. And I would say as long as we've got those permits by, you know, early October, maybe even mid-October, we'd still be moving forward this year.
Okay, so I, I want to be really clear. I don't want to do anything that would delay the project in any way from moving forward organically the way that it is. But on that note, that other property that is a few, a few down from the current one, have we asked, have we even tried to get what that would be to, to put that, that easement in there instead?
So.
Is it possible to, is it possible to get a quote from the current contractor? Cause I know that the, the other estimate was from a different contractor. Is it possible to get an estimate from them just to see what it would cost to do that?
Yes.
So I would like to see what that would cost.
That might impact other costs in the project as well, that other property is further away. So the contractor might say, I need X number of dollars to build, cause that's, the, the main cost there is building a road through the wetlands. We aren't, ironically, that's the one permit we do have, is to build that road. And when we did the original project bid, which came in well over budget, the cost for that road was $70,000. And so that was one of the first things that we cut out of the project when we were looking to reduce the project cost and maximize how much of the money would get spent on removing material from the lake. The big advantage of going the direction of building that road is it would result in a permanent access for the city that it could use if it dredges again in 20 years. The access that we're talking about now in this easement is just for this project. We tried to negotiate it as a permanent easement. The property owner was not interested in that because, largely because this is a buildable lot and so it may not remain a vacant lot forever.
This is our best option.
I, well, I mean, if we're talking the difference between 30,000 for a one-time use easement and 70,000 for a permanent easement, that then if we get funding from private residents that want to do dredging in 10 years again, they can do that. I would rather see a permanent easement. I would ra, I mean, considering especially that we're under budget on this one, if that can, if we can make that work within the budget that we've already set, I'd rather see a permanent easement.
We're not under budget. We're right at budget. We have, I think there was a small contingency remaining of a few thousand dollars or $5,000 or something like that. Which is not, it's, it's, it's really a substandard contingency for what you'd like to have going into most construction projects of this magnitude.
But if we would go that direction, I would assume that the cost to put a road in would be in the $70,000 range, might be a little bit less, but that will be, if that would be the case, be $40,000 less silt coming out of the lake. So it would be a much worse project.
So that $70,000 cost was from a bid that happened last year, so now we're a year later and there's been inflation. And also that $70,000 cost was derived as part of a public bidding process, whereas now we've got an identified contractor and we'd be asking one contractor to provide a change order price. We lose leverage.
I think it's not going to be that much of a bargain.
No.
I think it's not going to be that much of a bargain in that we're changing the rules in the middle of the game. I mean, that's what it feels like to me.
That would probably slow the whole project down.
Right, just.
It's would slow the project down. Maybe we could get it done, get it all buttoned up and still move forward this year. One concern that I would have is the discussions with the private property owner have been a little bit difficult. And if the city were to investigate this other alternative, I'd have concerns that perhaps the option in front of us right now might not be available if, if option number two falls through.
I would guarantee that.
Well, I, as I said, I don't want to do anything that would delay what's happening. My, my question is just, can we ask? Like, can we get, can we just see what it would, without delaying anything that's going on? If that, if they can come back and say, I mean, I just want to know what the numbers are.
What, what would prevent you from, what would prevent us from pursuing a permanent access point as a separate project?
I don't think anything.
Regardless. So it's like, hey, listen, we're looking ahead?
Oh, other than doubling the 30,000 and the.
That property owner was intending to give us a free easement if we built this $70,000 paved road that he could then use to get in and out of the river. So.
Well, he wants it done now. And he wants it done.
No, the, the other property, yeah, the other property.
Right, no, I understand.
Yeah.
But we could still pursue that.
Well, I think he'd want the road built.
I understand. No, I'm, I'm just saying.
Separate.
We're throwing, throwing tens of thousands of dollars around here like nickels. So I'm just saying, looking out for the future of accessing dredging for the mouth of the Bark River, which is inevitable, that might be something to get on an agenda to pursue as a long-term, longer-term solution for the future. And I would, I would be hesitant to blur any clear line of sight to pumping silt out of that lake as soon as you can.
Okay.
Based on my, my experience of not having any dredging done on the city's dime, other than a small, where we have a weed harvester over in Zastrow Bay in the last 12 years. So I, it's not the best deal in town, but I think they should, they should pump it again.
I started this off by saying, I don't want to cause any delays to this project at all. So if it's, if it's on, if it's going forward for this fall and that that's going to put any delay on it, I don't want to do that. But I, if it's something we can ask for, or especially if it ends up getting delayed till the spring anyway, I would just like to know what the numbers are.
And again, my concern is if we pursue option number two, option number one may no longer be available.
I think we have to prove this right now.
Even just to ask?
It's going to take time.
It would take a long time.
You got to get an alternative proposal from the other contractor.
Then they'd have to start construction on that immediately and that would take weeks to get it done and that would be going into next year. It's just impossible.
I definitely think there's a possibility of working with the other property owners to secure the easement, and I'm talking out loud here, but possibly building the road if and when it's needed, type of thing for the future. Now, sure, we're losing the $30,000 we're paying on this project, but I think those property owners would be, would be reasonable to work with. They have been in the past. I don't know why that would change in the future. As, as an alternative suggestion, Danielle.
There's an added, potential added value to moving with this now. There, there is sort of, on Tim's topic, there are some property owners looking into piggybacking on this with a private dredging effort. So we could actually get more. If they're successful, we could get, you know, another 300 cubic yards, whatever. Taking a step backwards, I think we're, we're putting it all at risk if we try to redesign this now.
It's a great question.
Let's, let's do it.
All right, looking for a motion. Seems like the discussions died down.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, or to create the temporary easement between Blot Revocable Living Trust and the City of Delafield for the $30,000 amount.
Second.
Can we have the second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we will move on to F, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of the proclamation in recognition of the 100th anniversary of St. Joan of Arc Church. This was something that Tim came to me and asked if, if the mayor thought it would be appropriate to do a proclamation like this. And I told him for 100 years, absolutely. So Tim is really the behind-the-scenes owner of this proclamation and I think he's going
I'll read it. I know the names. So is, is St. Joan of Arc Church up next to, on Neshota Road, north, it's in my district. That's where I go. And they're having a celebration for their 100th anniversary in September. It's not a well-kept secret if it's in a meeting, but I don't think that everyone knows we're doing a proclamation. I was just asked to do something in recognition from the city and I'm like, okay, this is, this is not heavy lifting. So I'll just read it and then we can say if we're in favor of it or not. So in recognition of the 100th anniversary of St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church, whereas St. Joan of Arc Church located in the City of Delafield is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2023, and whereas St. Joan of Arc Parish enjoys a long and rich history dating back to August 23rd, 1923, when Archbishop Mesmer brought the parish into existence under the founding pastor Monsignor Bernard Trout. And whereas St. Joan of Arc School opened in September 1955 and continues to educate local youth by promoting uncompromising character, academic excellence, the spirit of service, stewardship of God's creations, and spiritual development. And whereas Father James P. Layer became pastor in 1992 and oversaw the construction of the current church in 1997, followed by the Religious Education Center in 2001 on Neshota Road in the City of Delafield. And whereas Father Michael Strakoda, current pastor, continues the mission of St. Joan of Arc and its clustered parish, St. Catherine of Alexandria in Oconamok, with selfless dedication and spirit. And now, therefore, on behalf of the City of Delafield, we express our formal appreciation for and congratulations to St. Joan of Arc Parish for 100 years of faithful service to the people of the area and extend the thanks of a grateful community for its continuing mission, proclaim this 21st day of August 2023. I'll make a motion to endorse the proclamation by the mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Thank you.
Sounds wonderful.
Might have.
Okay, we'll move on to F, discussion, we'll go on to G, discussion of possible action regarding approval of vouchers list.
I'll move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, report of city officials, city administrator, A, update regarding the private fundraising for the memorial honoring longtime City of Delafield Mayor Ed McAllier.
Yeah, as you'll recall, we were looking to try to raise $3,000 to $3,500 for this memorial. And as an update, so far, we've received nine donations totaling $2,970. So we're right there at the, the lower end of the goal that we had for the memorial. So that looks like it will be moving forward. One other thing that I wanted to mention in an update is Alderman Grimmer mentioned that email that I sent out to the council regarding a compromise proposal sent out to the other Lake Country Fire and Rescue members. And I just want to report that I have been in touch with the chairman of the town of Delafield. He's expressed interest in the offer that, that the city made. And he's, we're going to be convening a meeting of all seven municipalities. It'll be the chief elected official and the administrator from each municipality and that will be happening Thursday of this week. So that's a, a positive development with that.
Terrific.
Good.
All right, city clerk.
The only update I have, I have, the rest of this week, I'm going to the WMCA conference. So I will be, there's some really great educational opportunities there. One of the ones that I'm, I don't want to say excited about, but the most interested in, there's several about the kind of addressing election securities for this upcoming election cycle. And I'll come back with a report of all of the wonderful things that I have learned.
Detailed?
As detailed as you guys want.
All right, C, city treasurers, I refer you to the packet for the June 2023 Treasurers' report. Any council requests for future agenda items? If you don't have any now, please reach out to the administrator in the future if you have one. Okay, 14, correspondence, Waukesha County memo to municipal planners. We'll move on to number 15, adjournment. We will end the meeting at 9:17, seeing we have no further business. Thank you, everyone.